I call to order this Monday, January thirteenth, twenty twenty five, meeting of the East Hampton Board of Education. If you would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It is the mission of the East Hampton Public Schools to partner with our families and community to prepare confident, compassionate, and collaborative learners who navigate a complex global society. This evening, we have no recognition liaison. Let's believe we have Bridget. Bridget, is there anything you'd like to share? No? All right, audience acceptance, anyone who would like to speak? You're on Zoom, please raise your hand. Anyone in the room? Hearing none, we are moving on to the consent agenda, which this evening includes the minutes from the December ninth, twenty twenty four Board of Education meeting and the December twelfth special expulsion hearing. Their motion.
So wait, second.
Motion, second, there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Josh, could you vote?
Aye.
You aye as well, thank you. All right, committee reports. Do you have representative?
Spanish Club has been very active for the past few weeks. On December sixteenth, Sam, Ugo, and Grace Dasher set up a Latin dance event at the senior center sponsored by Spanish Club. After school, Spanish Club members taught community members Spanish dances and they also she got to share delicious meal, meal. On January sixth, ten Spanish Club members went, spent their morning at the Salvation Army Home, Salvation Army homeless shelter, making breakfast. Those members were not able to attend contributor pride bringing food items. Interact and DECA held their January general meeting last week after school. Interact members continue to sign up for local service opportunities and DECA members also talked about how to sign up for the competitive events as well over effective studying techniques for midterms. The EHHS writing center had a productive meeting during X block on Thursday. Ms. Teigen, who's the head of the writing center, has been a great role model for the student tutors. National Honor Society has two big projects coming up. The first event is their Chipotle fundraiser night, which will be held on January twenty ninth from five to nine. Twenty-five percent of the proceeds will go to the EHHS National Honor Society, which they hope to use to purchase for stalls for graduation. The second event is the Big Brother Big Sister Program. NHS members are partnering with the center school. Students and the program will run after school on Tuesday starting actually tomorrow. A new club was formed called the World Celebration Club. Their goal to celebrate is to celebrate their culture and others, or to celebrate their culture and others. And they have a meeting tomorrow after school where they will celebrate with the Chinese exchange students' culture as well as share American culture. And finally, the yearbook club is still looking for pictures for the yearbook and we've been hard at work reaching out to students until the January deadline.
Our high school sports, boys' basketball is four and four through their first eight games and they play Coggin Chog away at Coggin Chog High School tonight. Girls' basketball is five and three through their first eight games and they play Coggin Chog at East Hampton High School tonight as well. Indoor track is preparing to compete in the short line meet February seventh at Hill House High School and Cheers hosting, excuse me, hosting an exhibition on Monday, January twentieth at six P M., which includes performances from the EHHS and EHMS cheer squad as well as a special appearance from the boys cheer squad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Happy New Year. We hope you all had a wonderful holiday season. We were pleased to welcome our students back and last week we kicked off our midyear assessment window. We're getting, you know, very close to the midpoint in the school year with the semester ending at the high school and midterm exams coming. But in the rest of the district, we had our midyear assessment window where our teachers collect performance data on students in order to measure their growth in the first half of the school year and also to plan instructional aid for the second half of the year. The I Ready diagnostic is underway across grades one through eight. So we started with reading last week and then math this week and a couple of combinations of that depending on the instructional model of the school. Additional assessments are also given in line with state requirements in order to get an accurate, complete, and varied picture of student performance. Much of this data is entered into our K twelve data dashboard, which the board supported a few years ago, allowing our teaching teams to easily manage the data they collect, to analyze it, to allow administrators to collaborate with teachers, instructional specialists, and related service team members to ensure that we are providing appropriate instruction and supports to our students. And so this, this process takes weeks and they'll be ongoing for students so that it's not all done at once. The midpoint of the school year also means that we will soon begin our midyear meetings as part of our evaluation process with certified staff and teachers. Administrators will be meeting with teachers over the next several weeks to review the goals that the teachers set in the fall related to student achievement and classroom practice. Additionally, our professional development and evaluation committee, or PDEC, met today. The committee has representatives from all four buildings and oversees our evaluation systems and professional learning calendar. We are planning for upcoming professional learning schedules, including a full day of professional learning on Friday, February fourteenth and two PD days in March, one is a full day, one is early release. The PDEC reviews survey feedback from our teachers regarding previous professional learning events and reviews input about their needs in addition to providing professional learning in support of key district goals. Key initiatives, for example, like Niasco accreditation or NIAC accreditation are worked on during professional learning time. And specialized supports are put in place for some of our newer programming, like our illustrious mathematics program at the middle school. We have specialized technical assistance for our teachers as we continue to expand that into eighth grade this year. And also a major focus of our February PD day will be the launch of our new literacy program at the K three level, Witten Wisdom. We're very excited about this. The literacy team has been participating in some trainings over the last couple of weeks. We're really excited to launch this with the larger memorial teaching team. So we won't launch the program with students until next fall, but our teachers will already be learning that program and making sure that they're prepared for that in the fall and also it gives us an opportunity to collect their feedback. So we're really excited for that. You might remember that our pilot teachers are continuing this year, so we also have their input as they're kind of the pioneers moving forward with Witten Wisdom. And so far, it's been really positive feedback from those classrooms. At the February PD day, we will also make sure that our related arts team has the opportunity to collaborate across buildings as we have some really special celebrations coming up very shortly after that. We'll have the district wide art show as well as the step up concert across our music programs coming up in March. So it'll be a great opportunity for them to prepare for those. And then additionally, throughout the month of January, district leadership is visiting all of our buildings during their faculty meetings. So that includes myself and Dr. Van Tassel, Rich Building from I T and Steve Fontenella from facilities. And we're doing a safety and security check in. As you might recall, we saw a lot of feedback from all of our staff, teachers, paraprofessionals, services, everyone who was in the building on October first. And we're touching base with staff to let them know what key initiatives have already been addressed based on feedback, what our next steps are and what pieces of feedback require longer term strategic planning. But we wanted to make sure that they had feedback on that survey data and were knowledgeable about how the district has been responding to those events. And so last week, we were able to visit with the staff at East Hampton High School as well as Center Elementary School. Tomorrow, we will visit East Hampton Middle School and next week Memorial School.
Go again. It was on. It's not on now. Is there green light? Yes. Hello. Did I just talk? Welcome over here. Let me see it. Green light is on. How about I just?
Happy New Year to everyone. Twenty twenty five has gotten off to a wonderful start at Memorial School. Unfortunately, the cold weather kept our cheetahs indoor for recess all last week, but we were back outside today and it hasn't kept us from playing and learning. As Mary mentioned, we began midyear assessments last week and I'm proud of our young learners' improved stamina and efforts to persevere through challenging tasks. As we complete assessments over the next couple of weeks, we will dig into the data more deeply during our monthly data team meetings in order to differentiate for our students' needs. Our grade three cheetah council has been busy planning a schoolwide book shop and swap. Over the last several weeks, they've been collecting and organizing gently used books. On Friday, they created posters about the upcoming swap to hang around the building and beginning on January twenty fourth, the shop and swap will be open for business on Friday mornings during arrival in the front lobby. Students will be invited to either bring in a gently used book to swap out for a new title or they may donate one dollar to purchase two gently used books. All proceeds will then go to creating a community little free library box that will be housed at Memorial School. The first grade team will begin their annual hundred day food drive this week. Their goal is to collect a hundred food items by the hundredth day of school. Barring any weather cancellations between now and then, the hundredth day is slated to fall on February fifth. Following the hundredth day of school, the food will be donated to the East Hampton Food Bank. Magical Monday will take place on February third, everyone's favorite. Students will be encouraged to dress up in fancy attire and practice good manners as Kate Caselli and her team of volunteers transform the cheetah pride cafeteria into a magical dining experience. And believe it or not, it is time to start thinking about our incoming kindergarten students. Kindergarten registration materials for the class of twenty thirty eight will be distributed next month and we'll begin scheduling screening appointments for early May. All entering kindergarten students will participate in a brief screening to look at their developmental readiness in the areas of gross and fine motor, expressive and receptive language, general concepts, and social skills. As you may remember us discussing last year, new legislation that was put into effect last summer changed the kindergarten entry age from five years old by January first to five years old by September first. This legislation states that those students who turn five years old after September first will have to wait until the following school year, in this case, the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, to attend kindergarten. However, the legislation also states that families of children who do not meet the cutoff date of September first but will turn five before the old cutoff date of January first may request a waiver for early entry. East Hampton's policy around early entry for kindergarten was crafted last year and all related materials were included in our kindergarten registration packets. Since the legislation has not changed this year, we will continue to follow the same protocol. We are looking forward to meeting our newest cheetahs in the coming months.
Happy New Year. Over the past several weeks, center school students have been engaged in a variety of educational experiences. Fourth graders participated most recently in book talks during their library media class. During those talks, Ms. Sawyer, our library media specialist, introduced many titles and our learners listened intently as they tried to make connections with one or more of the characters. And this activity supported the current unit of study in English and Language Arts. Students in fifth grade are excited as they recently began their fantasy reading unit. The unit, this unit of study is a favorite of our learners as it appeals to their imaginations and their books will bring them into magical and they'll meet incredible characters. Last Friday, two volunteers from the Connecticut River Salmon Association delivered approximately three hundred salmon eggs to Ms. Cordero's room. Students from her room and Mrs. Knapp's room will closely monitor the growth and health of the eggs as they develop into tiny fish. In April, the fish will be released by the students into the Salmon River. This program is supported in part by the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. Congratulations are due to fourth grader Haley Buck and to fifth grader Ivy Caselli. Their fire safety posters were selected as local winners for a statewide competition. The theme of the contest was fire prevention every one, every day, and the posters have moved on to state level judging. All students and staff attended our monthly PDIS assembly last week. The profile of the graduate attribute of empathy was highlighted and thirteen role model students were recognized for their acts of empathy. These students were named as members of the pride of the month and competed in two rounds minute to win it games. The profile of the graduate characteristic of creativity was introduced and students were challenged to be creative thinkers in the coming weeks. All our students participated in classroom spelling bees on the Thursday and Friday following break. Each classroom crowned a winner and those students will compete against one another in our schoolwide spelling bee on Friday, February seventh. The schoolwide champion will then compete in a regional competition in early March at the University of St. Joseph's in West Hartford. Finally, the invention convention is up and running. Students were asked to identify a problem and invent something that would work to alleviate the issue. Their intent to invent forms have been submitted to program advisors, Mrs. Cody and Ms. Sawyer, and the first in-school planning session is scheduled to be held this Wednesday morning. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. As Mary mentioned, our students have been putting in tremendous effort and dedication as they navigate through our midyear diagnostic assessments. As you know, these diagnostics are designed to give us valuable insights into their current levels of understanding and areas for growth. This week, students begin the assessment in the area of mathematics. We will be prioritizing time in February, particularly at our professional development day to thoroughly analyze the data, develop targeted instructional plans that address the specific needs of our students. This Friday, some of our student council officers will participate in the middle level leadership conference at Southern Connecticut State University. This event offers young leaders a unique opportunity to connect with peers from other schools while exploring important topics like collaboration, communication, and problem solving, essential skills that will further support their growth and success in their roles as student council officers. Our second annual spelling bee is in full swing with our sixth and seventh and eighth graders showcasing their spelling skills in the first rounds. Finalists from each grade have been determined and later this month we will host the exciting final round to crown this year's champion. Our EHMS chorus band and jazz band students have been diligently, excuse me, preparing for our winter concert, which will be held tomorrow evening at six thirty at the high school auditorium. We warmly invite everyone to join us for this special performance and celebrate the hard work of our talented musicians. Last week, the Arts and Cultural Commission graciously presented East Hampton Middle School with a framed digital photograph created by Colchester resident and artist Ursula Kimono. The stunning piece captures the tranquil surface of Cranberry Bog, offering a serene view meant to inspire a sense of calm. We plan to work with our students to identify the perfect location within the building where the artwork can be appreciated and provide a peaceful moment for those who view it. Finally, rehearsals for our spring production of Montai, Ai Tans, Fan La are in full swing and our students are eagerly preparing for what promises to be another fantastic performance. Mark your calendars, our show will run from March seventh to the ninth. Thank you.
Good evening. This past week, members of our East Hampton High School counseling team held their annual post-secondary planning evening for our high school families. Councilors reviewed the multitude of options for all of our students and family as they particulate through the high school, from four-year to two-year programs, which are the many career opportunities you work with for students, as well as the military and gap year options. This past Friday, speaking of career options, the Goodwin University Mobile Manufacturing Lab visited the high school. Students had the opportunity to tour the trailer and members of Goodwin University met with all of Mrs. Richard's students to talk about the Goodwin program. This year, our students that are enrolled in the program will be scrubbing in their internship opportunities come this spring. Earlier today, our twenty-four guests from our Chinese exchange program arrived and were greeted by their student ambassadors. Mrs. Keska, myself, Dr. Van Tassel, Ms. Clark, and Mrs. Russell greeted them and our hope is they will spend the week at the high school and experience all that our high school has to offer, not just during the school day, but our basketball games, our concerts, and other opportunities throughout the week. And finally, congratulations to junior Gillian Leonardo and senior Jack Gouboy. Their video journalism piece, East Tethan High School Breakfast with Santa, was selected by the Fox sixty-one student news program and shared on their website. The students, who are both members of the Bell Ringer News Student Board, wrote, planned, filmed, and edited the segment to highlight a great community service event sponsored by our high school Interact and Rotary Club. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the committee reports personnel. No report. Allison Kirkland.
We met tonight and we have a couple first reads later.
Any transportation building on the ground?
Nothing to report.
All right. We're up to superintendent's report, Dr. Van Tassel.
Good evening, members of the board. So I'm going to go briefly tonight just on my update because I know we have a lot that's on the agenda. So I too would just like to make mention of something that Principal Werner has just shared. I do want to thank all of our families as well as our Board of Advice Chair for helping to welcome the twenty-four students that we have from Northeast Normal University in Changchun, China, who are here over the course of this week. The week-long exchange, students excitedly arrived this morning after their travels. They began their travels on Friday, flew and entered into San Francisco on Saturday. From San Francisco, they then traveled to Newark, New Jersey as of yesterday and then they drove from Newark, New Jersey here and were in Connecticut last evening. Not certain as to where they were when asking with them this morning in Connecticut, but they did arrive here this morning. So albeit it was a long trip for them to get here and we are so excited that they are here. High school administration as well as district administration welcomed them and this is yet another year of this wonderful partnership that we have. And we look forward to the opportunities that these students have to be apart and immersed in our school environment as well as the opportunities to really meet with their peers here in America and spend the week with their families and getting a sense of what American life is. And then, of course, at the end of this trip, there'll be a culminating event, which will happen at Lakeside this Friday. An invitation went to board members. If you haven't been able to respond yet, if you might be able to come to the luncheon that's happening at Lakeside Friday, we welcome you all. But we'll be doing a farewell luncheon before they head back for their safe trip back home. So we're excited to have them. There is something I did want to inform the board of. I do want to provide you an update regarding something that there was correspondence that you may have received today through CAPE. I know it's been circulating and it happens to be a school district that is working with their legislators relevant to a new law that just went into effect on January first. But I want to share just a little bit about this and where we are as a district. So effective January first, two thousand twenty-five, there was a new law that is on the books in Connecticut and that is the Connecticut Paid Sick Leave Law. We recognize that as CPSSL. Up until about December, legal councils, various legal councils representing boards of education from across the state were really uncertain as to whether this was going to apply to public school systems. It was obviously understood that the law applied to public sector as well as private sector, but it was unclear based on collective bargaining and the way that contracts are written, whether this would apply to school districts. Based on guidance that legal councils were beginning to get towards the end of November, beginning of December, was such that school districts were included in the law. We were already familiarized with what the legislation required. However, it creates some complications for school districts and I want to explain that to you. So as you're all aware, you have both certified and classified members who are members of collective bargaining groups that work for the district. Within those collective bargaining agreements, we have allocated sick leave time. The state law requires that there be at least forty hours provided to employees. So based on your collective bargaining agreements, our collective bargaining agreements here in East Hampton, we have met that threshold of forty hours. However, within your collective bargaining agreements, there are stipulations of how you can use the paid sick leave that was inherent within your collective bargaining agreements. The Connecticut Paid Sick Leave Law expands really the utilization of those days. So where you may have limited ways in which you can utilize these days, Connecticut Paid Sick Leave Law extends those. And I'll use an example of mental health days. That may not, that's not written within your collective bargaining agreements as a reason for a paid sick day. However, within the law, it is. So what districts were then needing to do is to take a look at how it may be able to create a bank of days, albeit you've met the forty day threshold. However, what you, we were doing and what we have done and districts have done is you have taken that, for example, in your teacher collective bargaining agreement, they have been afforded fifteen sick days. So what we have done is we have designated forty hours of those sick days to be utilized in alignment with the Connecticut Paid Sick Leave Law. So we're not giving additional days, we're working within the collective bargaining agreement. It just extends the ability. The law supersedes contracts to begin with. So since the days were already provided as per collective bargaining, we have actually built it within the system of days that were already created. The challenge that we're faced with is that as of January first, there are employees within the district who have utilized their leave and perhaps don't have forty hours that remain. As a result of that, the law as of January first allows for employees who do not have the forty hours to accrue leave. So for every thirty hours work, they can accrue an hour. So we need a stopgap measure that begins January first that goes through June thirty because as of July one, collective bargaining agreements are going to roll into days where their forty hours are going to be there already, of which now there will be forty hours that is designed within the Connecticut Paid Sick Leave banks that we have created for each individual employee. There was a tremendous amount of work that has had to happen behind the scenes to make this happen. And I'm going to recognize both business manager or setup Karen as well as our payroll, Lorraine Sereila, who has been working very, very hard to develop this system within our employee tracking, tracking system or sick leave and personal leave. So there has been a lot of work that has gone into that. There are already conversations with legislators as to whether or not this law needs to be further defined through this year's legislative session, whether or not the school districts may be precluded from it. But at this point in time, because we are a part of it, we have developed the systems that we needed within it. It is a significant shift for our district and a memorandum did go to all of our employees prior to January first to let them be aware of this was the law, these were the parameters of the law, so that they were informed of it. We've also taken time to meet with all of the leadership from our collective bargaining groups so that they could understand. so that they could understand the ways in which we in this district are rolling this new law out. And then, as Director Kirkland Clark had stated, we are already visiting staff meetings. I'm already visiting staff meetings over the course of this month, but we're going through safety and security measures. I have taken time in the two meetings that we have been to already to talk a little bit about this Connecticut Paid Sick Leave Law. One of the greatest challenges we are faced with, and I do believe that our personnel, especially because they work within schools, one of the elements of this Connecticut Paid Sick Leave Law that makes it very, very challenging is that these hours can be taken on hourly increments. Your collective bargaining agreements suggest that you take half day or you take full day. That has been common practice in school districts. And because we are in the business of supervising children, to know that perhaps we may need to find coverage for an hour, as you know, getting substituted for this in the past is extremely challenging. Where this could place a financial burden on school districts is that it is unlikely that we would be able to recruit or retain a substitute for an hour's time. So therefore, we may have to get it out, get a substitute that will cover a half of a day just to cover for that hour. Because if we need coverage to supervise children, coverage has to be there. There is notification required and there are, it's limited, the notification requirements as well. Faculty member does not need to give an explanation or a reason as to why you're taking their day. As long as it fits within that category, they don't have to tell us what that is. But also the timeframe of which they have to notify us. And as you all can imagine, is if we are starting the school day and finding out that somebody needs to take an hour leave, it creates an obligation or a challenge for us. And we have shared that with our faculty and staff. And it's going to be very interesting to see as we roll this out at this point in time. I'm happy to report that the days or the time that has been utilized has been utilized to the utmost of professional responsibility by our faculty and staff recognizing it. And I think it's because they do realize the implications of what the hourly increment creates. What are the challenges that are faced with supervising children? Especially because we know we can't leave children unsupervised, so therefore, if we don't have a substitute that can be here, that timeframe, we must then draw from our current staff who are within the schools. So it places an added burden on those who are within the schools. So I believe that this will be able to be managed, albeit it's going to be a challenge. There could be some financial implications of this, but once again, it's created some concerns across the state of Connecticut. And there has already been some movement legislatively. The Chair Cole and I had attended a legislative breakfast in December. This was one of the topics with the legislators that was raised by Superintendent who was there. And then today, in fact, and that's why there may be an email that you've already received, that there was a school district in Connecticut that's working with their legislators to further inform them of the challenges that school districts will face in the implementation of this law. But I did want to be able to update you on that and where we stand as a district. It is functioning. And at this point in time, we just have to monitor it and see how this works for us over the course of this, of this next several months. And perhaps there might be some movement with it during the legislative session, sure.
Question. So this law resets every January first?
The law actually resets, correct. So it just, the way it's drafted as part, part of the year, our year is not established as the collective bargaining. So you're right, it resets in the beginning of the, at the start of the year. What we're trying to get further clarity on is to whether the allocation that's granted to them as of July one, if that allocation is enough to suggest that they were providing forty hours based on our school year. So that come January first, if you've utilized those days, there may be nothing additional that you could add, but it's, nothing is defined in that. That says that that's, doesn't mean that they can't further earn it come the following January first. I think there is a lot of gray area right now that we are still trying to sort through relevant to the law.
Because calendar year, January, I know it's not our fiscal year, if you will, but calendar year, January first to December thirty-first, there's forty hours given to them is sick leave, right? So then we should meet the criteria and not have to.
Correct. And that's where, that's where we're positioning it right now. The days themselves, the law does not allow for there to be carryover in these particular days, but keep in mind that because we've drawn from the allocation already granted to the members, that those do carryover. So then whatever days are not utilized in that forty-hour accumulation will then have to be backed into their sick leave banks at the end of the year. But once again, there is a new allocation that comes every year and that's where we would designate those into the bucket of Connecticut Paid Sick Leave Law for forty hours.
It just doesn't make sense if they don't allow you to do that because then it's January to June every year, you have to give the forty hours. They can't.
So more to come on this, but it's certainly, it's certainly presenting degrees of challenge, but I do want to say that your, the leadership of your collective bargaining groups have been very supportive of this. They understand the challenges that we're faced with. And then sharing it with our faculty and staff in the schools. I believe that everybody understands the implications of this on schools and we should be able to manage this okay. Okay? Okay, so that was that. And then the last piece that I was going to update you on is the safety and security, but I don't need to get into too much detail with that other than that we have taken the feedback very seriously. We have been able to meet with faculty and staff. I want to recognize Director Kirkland Clark and all the work that she did to really kind of place those within the buckets. So that as we share with our, we've been able to talk about what we have done to date. Where are some of the questions that have been asked that we still need to address and some of our thoughts for the future as it relates to it? My hope would be that come perhaps February, we can share that presentation with the board. We have a lot on the agenda tonight, so January wouldn't have been the night for that. But we're looking to share that presentation around future board meeting. Okay? Okay. We'll move into your enrollment pieces and then I'm going to move into the staffing pieces. So there isn't much to report on enrollment. So we have increased by one student, but you're going to see some fluctuations. We've gone now one thousand seven hundred twenty-two students reported versus one thousand seven hundred twenty-one. We have some alterations with, with elementary and also with high school. But there really isn't much to repair with the enrollment. We're fairly consistently where we have been. There is a second piece on my update that I want to share with you all. And this runs very closely with your, with the budgeting materials that that have been shared with you already within your budget binders. So there is a tab. I'm going to reference this for you all. So the purpose of me doing this now is just to give you some highlights as it relates to something that is in your budget books and that is a staffing report. So within your budget books, I'm going to have you all go to your binders. There is a tab. And in that tab, it talks, there is a class, there is a personnel report noted on the tab.
Staffing report, staffing report, that's there.
This document that I'm sharing with you is something I want to orient you to right now, but we will reference this throughout the budget deliberations. My hope would be that going into next year, that this report would be provided to you as a board before we actually begin the budget deliberations. Because the personnel factor within every single school district is the single most important factor for a school board of education to understand for its school district. This report itself highlights all of the information that you as a board member would need to know relevant to our schools, our staffing levels, our program opportunities that we provide. Now, during the budget deliberations, we'll develop, we'll devote some time to talking about really the staffing levels at each of the schools as we get into the, as we get into the school-based presentations. But I want to walk through this document very briefly without getting into the details because it's a lot of information to digest. It has taken months for the preparation of this document here. And I'm also going to give credit to Shelley, who has been instrumental in the formulation of this document and all of the surveying, the analysis of our reports, both state, state reports, but also our personnel reports that highlight really what our staffing levels are within each of our schools. It is a very, very tall lift to get it. But at the end of the day, the information that you're going to receive, I hope you're going to find it to be very helpful and for this to be a great point of reference and a resource for you as we get into the budget deliberations. This document is going to be posted electronically on our website. This is part of our budget, our budget materials. This is going to be posted electronically as a standalone document because of its importance within your overall budget itself. Keeping in mind that eighty-four percent of your budget fiscal year twenty-six proposal is based on staffing alone. So to understand that staffing and where they're at is extremely important. So within there, within it, we're going to go through it very quickly. I'm not going to go detail, detail page to page, but on page two, it's giving you really your enrollment as it stands, gives a little historical of last year and your current year. Your budgeting materials that we'll reference in a little bit when we get into the budget presentation is going to show you what your projections are for next year. So this is really mapping where your student enrollment is within your district. And why this is important because that's what's spread out across your staffing within each of your levels. Moving into page four is a highlight of your elementary staffing levels. This breaks it down by every grade level. How many teachers that you have on each of the grade levels and how many students are in those grade levels? And really what are the average class sizes of here? Okay? On the back side of that page, it breaks down all of the support staff as well as the electives that are in that school. So it further defines really what your staffing levels are for both of your elementary schools in totality. Okay? Now we're going to get to the more complex elements of this report. The next, we move into the middle school. As you know, middle school is structured very differently. Our students are not within one singular classroom during the day. So when you have, when you move to the middle school, you have departments and students who are working through core areas, but also different elective classes. The way this report is designed is that it takes you through each of the departments. It tells you the teacher, how many sections, classes the teacher is teaching, and how many students are in each of those classes. At the very bottom of every single page per department, it denotes really what their numbers of sections are, as well as the numbers of students that are being served in those sections and what are the average class sizes of them. So that's very important. If you context of how many students spread out, so if we have this number of students in sixth grade, when we spread them out across this department and taking these core areas, how many of those students are actually in all those classes? And the next, in the, in the, in the subsequent pages, it actually denotes all of the departments as well as the elective classes that are in that school. Okay? What's important to keep in mind, and when Principal Amaral comes and is able to present on her budget, we'll talk a little bit, and this is where some of those questions might be able to be asked just in terms of what are these course offerings, what are these classes? Are there particular standards that we utilize to, to have access to those classes? But there can be further perspective provided to what are those offerings that we're providing to the students in the, in the school. Okay? Now I'm going to move everybody. This gives you kind of that breakdown overall. Now we're going to move everybody to the high school because the high school is further, it's even more complex than what you're going to see at the middle school. Middle school has a quasi-team structure. At the high school, you don't. My school is really, it's more of an à la carte type program. But yet there are, as you know, graduation requirements that must be fulfilled. Those graduation requirements provide you with how many credit students need to have for language arts, how many F'd out for mathematical books. Further defined classes, so it's further defined within your policies. So within it, if you go, I'm going to have you move to, and there's a lot of information to provide here. But if you move to page twenty-two, this is very similar to what you see with the middle school, where each of your departments are broken down by their classes. Now, as you can imagine, a high school has much more class offering and opportunity. You have different levels. You have a lot of different classes that are being taught. Those are all taught within the certification areas of the people who are within those departments. But it's giving you really what those class sizes are for all of the classes and all of the levels that are taught in each of the, in each of the departments. Further on, it provides you even the information as it relates to all the electives that you have in the high school and how many students are enrolled in those electives. But I want to just make a, a point here. The information that was used to devise this doesn't paint the entire picture. This was put together based on first semester enrollments in October. Have to have some form of a basis and enrollments change. So when Principal Werner is able to speak with you about really their staffing levels, they may have more students based on some of the courses which are half-year courses who take up the second half of the year. So there are some elements within this that are requiring further, further conversation. In it, some of these courses are also combined. So where you might see some low numbers, it could be a combined course that actually is doing two classes, but the students sit as one class. So there are some anomalies that are within here that could be further defined by them. But once again, this breaks it down by section, it breaks it down by course, it tells you the classes that are being offered at the high school and really what the enrollment within, within those classes are. Okay? And I think that for me provides really the, the broadest overview that I can for this document. As I have shared, there is a lot of information that is in here, but it is extremely useful in understanding that program of studies that you have through this district. Looking at it from the elementary, going through it at the middle school level, and then going through it at the high school level. And I hope to be able to engage with the board in some further conversations about it once you've had a chance to really review it. And we can certainly have the administrator from the schools as they do their presentation, be able to talk a little bit about it. Okay? It's a lot to take in. I'm just going to shift gears here for one moment. I want to just give you a broad overview of that. That will be within your budget books. And as I said, for those who are listening at home, that document is also going to be sourced online. So just two last things to note, calendar of events, things that are coming up. So just a reminder that we're celebrating Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday this upcoming Monday, so we will not be in session. And then one last piece to note, that right now we are working with the town in hopes of getting a tribe board schedule for the last week of January. I think it's going to be a challenge trying to find an evening to be able to do this where it fits within everybody's schedules. But just like we had at the beginning of the school year, having our quarterly update be provided at the tribe board meeting for one. The second, by that point in time, you will have all received the fiscal year twenty-six transmittal. So it would be a nice opportunity for us to just be able to share a little bit about that fixed fiscal year twenty-six transmitted with both the town council as well as the board of finance. And then the last part to it would be, there is going to be a reach out to our local legislators to see if we might be able to have them come that evening as well to be able to just hear from each of the representative boards and leadership just in regards to some of the questions that we have or some updates that they might be able to provide about the upcoming legislative session. Any questions?
Well, very quick, in your, look at the high school, give me the page number you're on. Anyway, twenty-four.
Okay.
Under courses, you have F, of course, name, you have CP, you have H. What is, what is that?
Okay, so how many of the honors?
CP is called prep.
Is what?
And then when you see the other ones toward the bottom of those pages, like you see AP, that is advanced placement. And then when you see the other ones toward the bottom of those pages, like you see A P, um, that is advanced placement. E C E is early college experience through UConn. And if you see a D E, that's tool enrollment through a different university, D E, tool enrollment through, through various, through a multitude of universities.
You should have a.
I'll send, I'll send those out uh tomorrow. I'll send an email that gives a listing of those.
Or page that just has the acronym still. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I did remind everyone that we were going to not do, I mean, that's a valid, I need to understand the question, but we're not going to take any other questions to give everybody a chance to sort of absorb, digest. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. It's, it's there on your computer. It's correct. Everybody is able to notice. All right. So what I'd like to do this evening, and I, I um want to begin uh this budget fiscal year twenty-six proposal uh by just saying a few thanks before we actually get into the materials, very similar to the staffing report. There's a whole lot that is in here uh to digest. And I'm going to uh first give really what I want in terms of um uh the board to recognize and to be aware of is really what went into the development of the materials that are here before you this evening in the fiscal year twenty-six proposal. Following that, uh, I'm going to uh briefly give a presentation which gives an overview, overview of everything that is built within this proposal. And then we're going to take some time following that where I can orient you to both budget book. Uh, that is part of the material that you have received as well as to the binder that's there. But to begin, I just want to uh first start off by saying that the development of a fiscal year proposal, and you may have heard this from Superintendent Smith in the past, uh, is months in the making. Uh, and uh to be very truthful with you, uh, especially at the district level. The mindset around a budget isn't just defined in a window of time that begins really within the months leading up to a proposal that goes to the board. Uh, a board of education budget is very dynamic. There are changes that happen over an entire school year. And with each change, with each shift, with the ways in which your actualists in a budget year are running. It's causing you to think about what your next year's proposal is going to be. And you have an entire administrative team that, uh, albeit even within their different roles. Recognizes the significance of what a fiscal year proposal is that is provided to a board of education. But the work is immense and the time needed to develop it uh is over a long period of time. For me, I've been here with you now for six months. Uh, so my opportunity to really delve into this budget um has been a very short term. And with each passing year, uh, there is a greater understanding of everything that is in a budget. And the ups and downs, the fluctuations that happen over the course of the fiscal year. However, with a limited timeframe, a, a lot of our efforts, uh, and my efforts that began with this uh in July really relied very heavily on the administrative team within this district. And I will tell you uh that there have been conversations that have happened uh with individuals. Uh, we have scheduled independent meetings when we were able to meet with leadership individually. We have spent a lot of time where we have met uh together. Uh, which has helped me, one, to understand the programming initiatives of the district. But also to get an understanding of the history of understanding around what has happened fiscally. Where are, are some of the changes or shifts in the programming? Where are uh some of the priorities that we have as a, as a community? What you see before you, I've always struggled with calling something a superintendent's recommendation. Albeit, uh, taking full ownership or the fact that that's what the transmittal is. The reality is it is the work of a lot of people uh and a lot of thinking. And you also become a part of that. But I want to recognize our entire administrative team uh for their efforts. And coming together over the past several months to further educate me on the East Hampton program. But also to further develop uh the uh fiscal year proposal altogether. I would be remiss if I didn't uh give uh special attention here to your business manager. Um, I had alluded to this with all your board leadership with, with, with both Nancy and Augie. Uh, as it relates to uh the fact that uh my professional respect for her and admiration uh is so significant uh because of what she has been able to do here. As I have worked with different budgets and have put together ten years' worth of budgets in school districts. It is very clear to me that the knowledge base and the understanding that she has amassed throughout her tenure here is that she knows what is in these lines and understands it and understands the dynamics and the ebb and flow that happens within this budget. And that no superintendent, regardless of how many years of experience that you have, will have that key understanding. There's a focus of her role that is specific to the budget, the line items within those budgets, where she sees that ebb and flow each and every day. We have spent a tremendous amount of time in formulating a proposal for you. But from what my analysis has been is that I think there has been great work that has been done by the board of education. Through your administrative team here uh within the district and your previous budgets that have been forward and those proposals that have gone forward. The work that's ahead of us over the next two months is significant. Uh, the proposal that you're going to hear from me tonight is going to come one by way of a formal transmittal. Uh, which is the formality of a transfer of budget from the superintendent to the board of education. And from this point forward, the, the, all elements within this budget really become also part ownership with the board of education. And ultimately, the board will make its determinations as to what it believes it's going to be necessary to have within the budget. And therefore then provide this uh by your charter, which is by the end of February, uh, to your board of finance. So there is a lot of work that's going to be done over the next, uh, over the next two months. Uh, and with that, I know there's going to be a lot of questions. But uh there is uh right now multiple levels of uh work that have been done. Where the materials that are before you are going to require a bit of explanation this evening. Um, and the way I'm going to do it is by way of formal transmittal. Then a presentation which is going to give you really the key takeaways of the budget, but a very brief presentation. Um, and then the last would be to go through really some of the things that have been provided to you with the budget book. Uh, not getting into too much depth with it, but at least giving some context to it. As well as uh the materials that are within the budget binder. Uh, questions as it relates to it, I think would be, you know, tonight arbitrary unless there are things more relevant to the discussions that may be coming. Uh, but what we do plan to do is, uh, there is going to be a Google spreadsheet. But I am going to ask that the board members after hearing the presentation tonight. As well as being able to review some of these materials, I want to create an opportunity or a place for you to be able to warehouse questions. And those questions can then uh be provided to us through this Google spreadsheet. So that we have enough time to prepare. One of the, one of the things I don't want to do is be able, is to come to a meeting and not be able to answer the questions. So sometimes when we get those questions in the moment, you don't have enough time to prepare all those. And instead of providing misinformation, it's important to be able to gather what some of those questions are so that we can uh come prepared. But there may be times throughout the deliberations where we really have to go back to uh unpack some things uh as it relates to perhaps a question that you have, make sure that we can get uh for you the accurate information. With that being said, the materials that you have before you really encapsulate the biggest elements of the budget. And so once again, I'm going to begin this in a moment uh with going through the, really the formal transmittal. And then giving you an overview presentation before we actually get into, uh, before we can actually get into the, the materials within the budget. Okay, so I'm going to have everybody is open up into the binders themselves. Uh, at the very beginning of the binder, um, under the tab that says budget book. Are going to page four is the uh formal transmittal. And I'm actually going to read this with you tonight. I'm going to go through this and share this. And this is going to give you the overall. And then following this is really what the presentation is going to give is really on the key takeaways. Uh, so uh please accept the following as an overview of the superintendent's proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-six. Next year's proposal of forty million, four hundred sixty-nine thousand, one hundred six is a net increase of two million, seven hundred forty-three thousand, six hundred seven dollars over this year's current budget of thirty-seven million, seven hundred twenty-five thousand, four hundred ninety-nine dollars. As a result of the unanticipated expenses in our fiscal year twenty-five budget. The proposal represents an increase of seven point three percent in expenditure over the previous year. Reductions to grant revenue, fixed budgetary expenses, contractual obligations. And inflation on items and services continue to challenge our ability to keep the overall cost of education affordable for East Hampton taxpayers. With this being said, we believe our fiscal year twenty-six proposal will be similar in comparison to other district proposals across the state of Connecticut. As we make every effort to preserve the quality of education with the fiscal, with the fiscal challenges we are facing. As with each year, developing the annual fiscal plan for these Hampton public schools requires thoughtful consideration of the district's priorities, initiatives, fiscal challenges, as well as student outcomes. Due to the timing of our budget preparation, it is important to highlight that this budget proposal will remain a work in progress throughout the deliberations of the board of education before it is transmitted to the board of finance. In creating the fiscal year twenty-six superintendent's recommendation, our administration made every effort to accurately forecast our school district expenses and grant revenue well in advance of the next fiscal year. With this, we also acknowledge and anticipate that changes to the fiscal year twenty-six budget will continue to occur due to the dynamic nature of school budgets. Revenue shortfalls, special education expenses, agreements are all, um, um, excuse me. Special education expenses, legislative mandates, personnel and health benefit changes. And adherence to collective bargaining agreements are all variables that impact all school budget forecasts. Changes can happen before the fiscal year begins as well as throughout the budget year. As a district, we have continued to publicly make note of the sizable and unanticipated budget impacts to town departments and elected officials in keeping with transparent fiscal management practices. Prior to concluding, I would like to thank the community of East Hampton, the board of education, town council, and the board of finance. In addition, I would like to thank the town manager and the town's capital committee for their continued support of these Hampton public schools. The following synopsis will provide you with considerations for the fiscal year twenty-six budget proposal. Key budget initiatives. Due to a multi-year operating deficit, the fiscal year twenty-six budget recommendation represented as a continuation of services budget that addresses a base funding adjustment and maintains current levels of programs and services. The budget proposal supports the funding for a mandated elementary reading program. Meets our maintenance of effort requirements for special education. And addresses the continuation of services to support the academic and social emotional needs of our students. Most importantly, the recommended budget enables the district to continue its program offerings to students in pre-kindergarten through grade twelve. Within those key budget initiatives exists the elementary reading program, we will discuss at a later meeting. High school dual enrollment, personal finance course offering. Elementary and middle school health programming, elementary, middle school science programming materials. Middle school social studies text, as well as family consumer science and technology education support. And we'll define, further define those. The wages and benefits. For fiscal year twenty-six, the fixed operating costs that substantiate our most significant drivers cannot be easily adjusted due to contractual obligations. The budget drivers that represent the greatest share of the proposed budget are twenty-six million, three hundred nineteen thousand, eight hundred ten dollars within salaries both classified, certified, uh, and unaffiliated. And seven million, five hundred thousand, five hundred sixty-seven dollars, which is in benefits. Together, wages and benefits account for eighty-four percent of the total budget. Negotiated wage percentage increases without increments are noted below. Teachers, for fiscal year twenty-six, their collective bargaining agreement has an increase of three point five percent. Administrators, two percent, custodians and cafeteria workers, two point seven five percent. Parent educators, two point seven five percent. We have collective bargaining uh for intervention specialists that are, that's coming up. Secretaries, two point fuck, seven five percent, and school nurses, two point seven five percent. As far as health insurance making up a large portion of the benefits line, we have proposed an eleven percent increase. Important to note personnel changes. The following represents the proposed personnel changes to the fiscal year twenty-six budget proposal. Personnel decreases. One, full-time educator, an elementary teacher, certified teaching position. The purpose of that is due to a reduction in student enrollment. The next, our personnel budget adjustments. Uh, we have a one point oh full-time employee as a school psychologist, which is also a certified position. That is already an existing position in your budget. It's been moved to the operating budget due to a grant revenue loss. The next are three full-time employees who are intervention specialists. Those are classified positions. Those are also existing positions. Those have been moved to the operating budget due to tuition revenue loss. We had a loss of student tuition. So therefore, those positions which are already existing positions, um, those have remained within the budget. You will note, there are no personnel increases for next year within there. Budgetary based on the adjustment, but there have been no proposed new positions uh based on this recommendation. Student enrollment projection. The decline of sixty students as we, as reported in our annual October first date reporting was larger than projected for the current school year. Our October two thousand twenty-four enrollment was one thousand seven hundred sixteen students. This consists of one thousand six hundred sixty-three in district and fifty-three tuition-based students. Our N S D C, uh, New England School Development Council enrollment projections show a reduction of forty in district students for the upcoming school year. Where it will then plateau for the following school year. The ten-year projection shows the district will decline slightly over the next several years before returning to its current enrollment levels. In two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, the enrollment is projected to be one thousand six hundred seventy-six students in district as well as out of district are tuition-based. The budget book summary. With this transmittal, you are receiving a formal budget book, and that is the document that we are in right now. The purpose of creating this budget book is to provide an organized, transparent, comprehensive resource to our board of education members about our expenses. Revenues, assumptions, and challenges. Further, the budget book will serve as an accurate point of reference regarding our current spending projections. The format provides the answers to many questions that board members may have or receive from community members seeking greater clarity around our fixed and variable operating expenditures. In preparing this book, school and district leadership spent months reviewing our current programs and services with district staff. To arrive at next year's proposed increase has been a lengthy and detail-oriented process. Both formal and informal discussions have been occurring at all levels, which gives me which gives me great confidence that the request is in alignment with the needs of the district. Please take the next several weeks to review the information in this book and note any questions you may wish to present during our January workshops as well as February. In conclusion, as we enter into another collaborative budget cycle, I would like to begin by thanking our entire Board of Education for the many hours you will devote to fulfilling our budget responsibilities. Additionally, I view the proposal you are receiving today as the beginning of a very collective, informative, and strategic planning process that will ensure our schools remain an attractive asset for our entire community. So what I'm going to do now shift gears and go to the actual presentation, the overall presentation of the key takeaways of the budget. And then we're going to come back to this budget book where I could spend some time going through with numbers of the board. Okay. So what you're seeing right now represent the overall graphic as it relates to our budget itself. As noted in the transmittal, currently, the budget is situated as a recommendation at forty million, four hundred sixty nine thousand, one hundred six. That's a seven point three percent increase, which is further explained as we get into the budget book, which is a two point seven, four, three, six, zero, seven increase over the fiscal year twenty five. As it's broken, as it's
Adjust the microphone?
Sure. I'll actually stand right here so you can, so you can have it. So as it's broken down here, this just gives you a visual representation of really as you are already familiar with. And that is that your salaries and your benefits are making up the largest portion of your budget here. I do want to make note of one piece to this graphic. Note the green and that's supplies and materials. I know that Boards of Ed spend, and we do spend a lot of time talking about supplies and materials, but that is such a small portion of the overall element of it. And you're going to find as we get into this, those numbers themselves are what constitutes that. It's pretty much defined in some of the experiences or the things that have happened over the current fiscal year as well as state mandates. What I've highlighted here are just once again to make the point that within this that we have some position decreases here with our elementary teacher position. But then we have position adjustments. We have not added any additional teachers to the budget or any classified staff. I do want to make a quick note though, that classified staffing could shift over the course of a fiscal year. We recognize that at any given time, we may have students who are presented to us who either moved to the district or have been identified with needs, where there may be some shifting that has happened with classified staffing. And I know that's not the first time you have heard this, but there has been additions of classified staffing. And I would just always make it known to the Board of Ed, it's much more easy to determine those certified staffing levels than it is for the classified staffing levels. So what we've done is we've based it on our current classified staffing levels, but I always put an asterisk there because shifts do happen. Personnel cost, as noted before, when you factor your salaries and everything that's with in that benefits line, that does constitute eighty four percent of your operating budget. What I provided for you is historical as it relates to your enrollment. The enrollment figures that I'm going to share with you in this piece are different than what you're going to see within the NESDEC projections. And that is because the NESDEC projections don't account for the out-of-district students as well as those that are in the MAGA, so as you receive your monthly enrollment report, we're talking about all the students that the district is responsible for. Your NESDEC has a section of it that denotes that, but those aren't in the projection, the numbers that they share. But as you can see here, based on our current stat, our student levels, we are projecting there to be one thousand six hundred seventy six students here within the district. What we did factor in was kindergarten for next year based on the NESDEC projection of where our kindergarten should be. Some of the budgeted program highlights for it, you know, I think for every school year, we will always have requests that come with them. The mandated primary reading program, that's something that we are required to do. That is coming at a cost of a hundred five thousand dollars. That is driving up that supplies and textbook line. But that is something that we are required to do very fortunately. Our district did receive a right-to-read grant, which helped with the, with really the beginnings of the research, but also with this program, but it is something that we are required to do. The dual enrollment personal finance course, one of the legislative mandates that came most recently was personal finance at the high school. We have to offer a personal finance class. This is also, albeit it's not required by the mandate, it offers an opportunity for an accelerated class, but it is connected to a mandate of having a personal finance course offered at the high school. The social studies text, you receive textbook requests annually. The social studies text is to replace an aging textbook that they have at the middle school. When we talk about the school-based budgets, they'll be able to talk further about those materials. Health is a requirement based on mandate from the state of Connecticut. It's a curriculum requirement. And it's important that we continue to provide health curriculum. So this includes some health curriculum for both center as well as the middle school. And then the last is you have already made commitments to family consumer science and the career technical education field. So there has been some funding that has been set aside to make sure that we're continuing those efforts that have been already set in motion through previous forward discussions and in our fiscal year. I want to highlight for you all really our per pupil expenditure. So within your budget binders, not the budget book, within your budget binders, there is two elements I wanted just to share with you. First is that when we were coming to publication of your materials, the fiscal year or the twenty four, twenty three, twenty four schooling year, which was last year, hadn't been certified. So we have two elements of data to share with you. Fortunately, last week I was able to get access to the twenty three, twenty four per pupil expenditure report from the state of Connecticut. That has been copied, that has been placed into your binder. But you're going to see that this fiscal year twenty four per pupil expenditure isn't reflected in the actual budget book. It's in the binder. The reason why is to do with the timing of it all. However, just to make note of this, fiscal year twenty four, your per pupil expenditure in this district was twenty one thousand, six hundred seventy six dollars. And the point of reference to make with it is that out of your district reference group, which is based on communities like East Hampton, similar wealth indexes for the community, is that you were eleventh out of twenty four in our district reference group, which situated you just right above the middle, twelve being at the middle, you're right above the middle. As far as the state ranking for per pupil expenditure, you are eighty third out of one hundred sixty nine school districts. For fiscal year twenty three, you are exactly at the middle. And the average of your per pupil expenditure matched the average of the per pupil expenditure for the state of Connecticut. For this fiscal year twenty four, you're eighty three, once again, in the middle. I recognize that it's all very subjective as to what people believe. Are you spending too much? Are we spending too little? I always use this reference as a point of reflection to state that you're right in the middle. Right in the middle of state and Connecticut, perhaps not spending too much, perhaps not spending too little. But it is an important factor to know. What could change? What are the things that could shift? And there are always areas where you could see significant changes that could impact your bottom line of the budget. State mandates. What has me a bit concerned is that we are entering into the long session this year. There is a lot of conversation as it relates to schools and school programmings. We are not certain what will become of this legislative session. And there could be proposals, further proposals that could end up costing this district money or funds to help support. Fortunately, a lot of the mandates that have been recently approved have come with them. Some types of revenue sources, for example, the reading program or the right-to-read grant as well as professional development to help support districts as they ship. So with some mandates and the ones most recently, there has been pressure on the legislature to help provide some degree of financial remuneration to support it. However, by the time we are to find out really what these mandates are, your budget is already delivered to the town. And in most cases, it's already been voted upon. So there's always this risk of are there additional liabilities? I would say that state mandates will always remain a liability. But this being a long session is that it could amount to a lot of time, a lot of discussion around topics. At the end of the day, what usually happens is that there is a large bill that everything is wrapped into. And at the previous long session, the bill was in excess of five hundred pages. And it takes time to process that over the course of the summer to understand what are the implications. The likelihood of anything impacting us for fiscal year twenty six isn't as significant as those that may impact us for future years, but there could be some mandates that we would have to then impose for fiscal year twenty six. But usually they do try to gradually implement them if there is a new mandate that's going to come in. The next additional potential liability, or it could be savings, has to do with faculty and staff turnover. We do our best to forecast where our staffing levels are going to be. And even during the deliberations that we'll have over the next couple of months, there is the possibility that we might see some shifting. We have focused, we have made the projection based on where we currently are and what we currently know. But yet there could be some shifts that happen over the course of, over the course of this year. Where there are potential for savings is that once a budget is formulated and perhaps adopted by the town, that we have some vacancies that happen at the end of the year. Those vacancies are backfilled where we may not be expending as much as we would for that staff member. But I would just posit that in, we are in areas where it's a shortage area. There is the possibility that it could go in the other direction because we're, we could be struggling to find a faculty or staff member that would situate into that role. And unfortunately, our, our, we're finding that the pools of candidates for school districts is getting less and less with each year. So it presents some challenges that we really can't predict for, but there is always the potential that you could have some faculty and staff turnover. Health insurance premium costs and enrollment changes. Open enrollment does not happen until after the budget has already been set. So your May is when your open enrollment will happen. And as a result of that, we are not certain exactly how many will be taking our benefits that we're offering, but there could be shifts of those, so there could be some savings. However, thinking about that vacancy factors, we could have staff members who do leave a district that unfortunately, based on the possibilities that, that the person that is going to backfill that position may require a benefit that perhaps the person who was in the position before didn't have, we then have a liability that we're dealing with. So health insurance premium cost enrollment change could shift. We did note, as was in the transmittal, an eleven percent projection. That's based on our current running of claims for this year. We have spoken with our insurance broker. That was the suggested proposed increase that we had on there. That could shift, that could become less by the time we're at, at the, at the time where you have to make a further, a final determination of our budget. We're going to continue to monitor that over the next two months, of which if there's any shifting that happens with health insurance, we might be able to see some changes with that. That might be favorable to our board proposal, or they may not be favorable to the board proposal. Special education outplacements. This has been a significant change for the board where you have seen some budget overruns annually. I'm going to highlight those in a few minutes as we get into the budget book because it is a consideration as you take into account the seven point three percent proposal. However, we have factored the current student population that we have that's receiving outplacement services, tuition services. Those are what are built within the budget. But over the course of a year, those could be very expensive for school districts. And that unfortunately is what happens, and that's where you find that your numbers don't meet. But that is, we did not factor any additional beyond what we currently have. We've based it on what we know currently, but that is for conversation with the board as well as conversations with the town. Because the areas where school districts across the state of Connecticut are continuing to struggle is the outplacements. And the fact that many towns have operated in the way that you have as well, which is your budget on what you know. And they don't have additionals built within the budget because that could significantly increase your, your budget lines. Magnet school tuitions. Fortunately, your magnet school numbers have been fairly constant. However, we don't know what and how many students will be actually accessing magnet programs till after the budget is developed. There was legislation that went into effect this year, and that was that districts were not obligated to fund any more than fifty eight percent of tuitions. In the past, you were paid a large, a much larger amount. Now it's at fifty eight percent. It is set. That could come up in the legislative session this year. So there was almost, I don't want to say windfall, but districts did very well with this new fifty eight percent law because you were only obligated to pay fifty eight percent of the tuition. If this were to change, you could be obligated to pay more. So right now, we have factored this on what the current statute is, and that is how it's set up as a fifty eight percent. But that could shift. We just have to continue to monitor that. And we usually do not find out about magnet schools, the numbers of students, nor what they're going to charge for tuition until June. We do start to get, receive word in May, but they have to wait for the legislative session because most of your magnet programs and the regional education service centers don't get confirmation as to what funding they're going to get until the budget, the state budget has been formally approved. And then the last is where there could be some possible savings. And at the legislative breakfast that we attended in November, shared services are a big conversation. And there is always the potential that there might be districts that could work together to develop programs which help bring further savings to taxpayers. So with this, there was conversation at the legislative breakfast that are there perhaps ways of which they could lobby the state to provide incentives or revenue to towns that do do regional efforts? Fortunately, here in East Hampton, you have had students who have come to East Hampton from out of district that they have funded tuitions. Perhaps there might be revenues down the road that are provided to districts that offer this. You also have the TLC program. That program has students that are here as well as East Hampton. So you already have some shared service models. And I know that districts all do want to work together if it's a way that we could help to create a budget that's more financially feasible for communities. So that could bring some additional savings down the road. And it would be great to see if we had something coming with the legislature that there was some revenue provided. The next is just a broad overview. So within your budget book, we'll go through this. You are really defined in particular lines. These, this is designed to what's called the uniform chart of accounts. Your salaries, your benefits, your professional technical services, contracted services, other purchase services, supplies, equipment dues and fees. What I've done here for you is just giving you where, what was adopted for the current fiscal year, what has been proposed in the budget, where is the difference, and what is the percentage of difference that's on there? I'll just go with the gold reference on here. So in the transmittal that you have, but also in the budget book, we denote that of that one point six three five million increase, eight hundred eighty thousand dollars of that is based on certified staffing. That is explained to you in other documents that are contained within the budget book. Seven hundred sixty thousand of that is classified. I want to make a note that most recently, this past fall, we just renegotiated the teacher collective bargaining agreement. And I did have an opportunity to connect with your boards council relevant to how did we do as it related to those? Because, you know, certified staff are really what are driving the cost of, of the total salaries. So we had settled an agreement with them at twelve point seven percent. Right now, the average in the state of Connecticut, there have been sixty four collective bargaining agreements that have been settled. The average is thirteen point four percent. And the reason I want to note that is to note that, you know, the teachers, I believe, very much could have settled higher. I think they recognized the fiscal challenges that this community has been facing and understood that. And that was something that we had talked about during collective bargaining. So a very reasonable So a very reasonable agreement, especially at a time when collective bargaining agreements are coming in much higher. An agreement was settled that was very reasonable, and I want to give a note to that. Terms of the total benefits, the big drivers that are within that is that the medical insurance overall is increasing by three hundred seventy seven thousand, social security by forty five thousand, and the defined contribution plan by forty one thousand. When we take a look at those numbers, it's almost really accounting for where the increase is in that, is in that benefit line. You're going down professional technical services, and a lot of that has to do with the fact that based on some of the changes that have happened with the staffing and the programming that you provided, it's been able to bring that, it's been able to bring that line down. Once again, that is further explained to you within the budget book. Contract services, albeit it's showing a fourteen point seven percent increase, it's really a seventy two thousand dollar increase in the overall. Your purchase services, this is where you're going to see some of the, some of the largest drivers of this budget. And as it stands, albeit it says four hundred eleven thousand is what the increase is, that's the overall, including what has been proposed for others. Obviously, there's adjustments within every fiscal year. But tuitions alone accounted for six hundred nine thousand dollars of an increase in that line. And those tuitions had occurred as of March of last school year. So those tuition increases happened very early on, but they were unfortunately not something that was adjusted into the current fiscal year. And that is, that is a major cost, a cost driver within that total other purchases line. And I'll get into further explanation of it as, once again, as we get into the budget book. And then I just want to make a note within the supplies. So there, so noting a three hundred thousand dollar increase, but really it's a one point four million. There have been adjustments to programming to help make room for the new reading program that's in there. And as I mentioned to you, we have a hundred and, we have a hundred and five thousand designated for the reading program. So there were already some limitations that were placed within the textbook request under supplies to help make room for the new reading program so that the budget itself wasn't going to be what it usually is, plus more to it. Within there is electricity. And as you all recall, when you received your quarterly bills in September, everybody had additional charges and it was, was talked about on it. Talked about with it. Our electricity lines based on, one, the rate increase that we had to lock in, two, when we lock in collaboratively with the town. But in addition to that, those charges, your electricity line alone is going up a hundred fifty four thousand dollars. Once again, that is further explained within the budget book. But, but seventy five thousand of that is denoted to those charges. So what you experience in your house, you compound that based on the size of the buildings that we have. And those were unanticipated. We didn't know that those were happening, just as every homeowner didn't realize that those were happening. But those were huge drivers in that line. You're downing your total equipment. And then your dues and fees, albeit it's just a nominal amount altogether. We will, we'll further talk about that as we get within the budget book. The next I want to share with you is just some key takeaways. This gives you a, relevant to your proposed increases of the past. This just talks a little bit with you about what your proposed, or what the budgets were that were approved. And most recently, you were at five point two percent last year. I've always correlated this number with the CPIU, the Consumer Price Index for Urban Consumers. And I'll even factor it at the Northeast level. So the Department of Labor annually releases those statistics, actually gives it month to month. And during the years of twenty one, twenty two, and twenty two, twenty three, it was seven percent in twenty one, twenty two. In twenty two, twenty three, the inflation was six point five percent. So why I share that with you is that your budget proposals of the past have been well within the lines of what was known as, what was the inflation during that period of time. So I feel like from my review and looking at all of it and trying to get a better understanding of this is that I think you have worked extremely well with finances that you knew that you had. And you've made effort as a board to try to adjust the budget so that we knew that we could gain the, the support of the taxpayers. Your five-year overall average for your budgets is three point nine percent. Okay, now including what my proposal was for this current fiscal year. And then the last piece, I just, this is the last slide to share, and this just goes over really our enrollment. So this is just the NASDAQ projection. And I have the NASDAQ enrollment report. It is in your budget binders. It's also further defined in your budget book. So this is where you're going to see a smaller number. I just wanted to point it out because it doesn't include out placements, doesn't include magnet schools, vocational schools, does not include students who are at agri-science program. But it also doesn't include students who require private school services, who are attending private schools, but based on state laws that we provide services to some students. So those are all obligations that you have as a board that financially drive your budget. But that's what makes it more expensive, but they're not always seen as being your students because they're not here within the district. So the projection that is noted within NASDAQ is one thousand six hundred twenty three. And I just share with you that trend of ten years back, looking ten years forward. And this is where it shows that there is a bit of a plateau where we're about to hit now, but then it could possibly increase. Why is that important? Well, first and foremost, that demographic studies, there's always some variability with whether it could happen. Things to pay attention to are how many permits, the building permits that there are. Also, what median age of a population is, and is the potential that the housing stock may transfer ownership to those that have families. So there's a lot of things that could shift within it. But when looking at the enrollments, one thing to be very careful of is the realities that you may have, if, if we're looking to make savings in a particular year, it may come to a point where those savings are going to potentially cause impact to the population. Because you're going to have to add, I don't know where that's coming from. You're going to have to add additional staff moving back. So we remove staff only to find out that you have to add staff back in based on the fact that your enrollment's then going to start to increase again. Okay. Presentation itself, shift to the budget book so I can share with you the budget book. So the document that had where the transmittal was, I'm going to go through some key points that are in there. And there is an index at the very beginning that will help to orient you a little bit to it. Page nine, I just want to take everybody to page nine, and that's the, where it's superintendent's budget commitments. So of course, for me, I want you to understand by developing it, then the bridge challenges you have is you want to obviously do right by the school district and to make sure that we're continuing to move forward as a district. My commitments to you in developing this was that I wanted to make sure that the programming for your students for teaching and learning, that that's there. The second part to it is to make sure that the resources, the materials, that your teachers need to be able to deliver on their commitment to students, that that's there. And the last is to further grow your program of studies. It's to understand this is what the program of studies is that's here within East Hampton, and that we want to continue to further that and also further it to be in alignment with things such as your profile graduate, but also other standards that are in there. Your high school, as you know, is really largely driven by NIAS, your New England Association of Schools and Colleges accreditation process. But those are really, for me, those largest commitments that are really in the back of my mind while I'm putting together the proposal. I can have you move to page eleven. This is an important, this is an important page. This page eleven itself gets into why is the recommendation at seven point three percent? Because it seems awfully high based on what we have seen in the past. And I share this with you just as a point of reference, but also for consideration. I realize that there is always dynamics that happens with budgets and changes that could happen. But I want everybody to understand that that seven point three would have been less had we had some things in our budget that we didn't anticipate. So right now, as it stands, and the top it gives you where our current request is. This is what I want you to consider, is that last year you were at a five point two nine percent. As of this point in time of the year, January first, two thousand twenty five, there have been seven additional outplacements, and those are what I had noted that had occurred. Okay, those seven additional outplacements have cost four hundred eighty three thousand, two hundred twenty five dollars to the district. The electricity rate adjustment that we have had to incur in this current fiscal year, and that's where some of the struggles that we're having right now, even in our current fiscal year, that's seventy five thousand dollars. And then at the end of last year, because you moved into a different health insurance plan, the health insurance anthem provided you a two hundred fifty thousand dollar rebate. That rebate was applied in the current fiscal year. So it reduced the bottom line of the health insurance line by two hundred fifty thousand. But we knew that that following year, that that two hundred fifty thousand was really go raise that bottom line by two hundred fifty thousand because that's where you were. Those together add up to eight hundred eight thousand dollars. That's two percent of the budget request. So when you take the seven point three and you reduce it by two percent, it puts you at five point three. And if you go back to the request from last year, the initial proposed request or the final approved amount was five point two nine. That's why, like for me, I look at it saying, the numbers are on alignment. I think where the request was, and then I might further look at where Superintendent Smith's proposals were to you. And they're all in very close alignment with where we are right now. But it just makes sense that, yes, you are seeing an increase of a five point two percent. Really, it's a seven point three without these things factored into it. But it does account for what is the largest driver of what's happening. And those are being experienced in this current fiscal year. Okay? Next, I wanted to move you to page thirteen. This is just a description of where is the money. Everything that you're going to see in this budget book is laid out this way. It's laid out for all the things that are the key drivers before we get to the object codes. I did not include everything and anything that could possibly go in there. I focused these next pieces because these are all elements that are going to help to define why the object codes are where they are. So first, we talk about where is the money coming from? And it breaks it down, how much of the revenue that's supporting this district is coming from the municipality? How many, how much of it is coming from the state? How much of it is coming from the federal government? If you look at the charts below, I've given you a multi-year perspective that indicates that you are seeing an increase in the burden on the, on the municipality. And if you look at the lines below it, you see a decrease in the state. So you are now picking up more of this, and this is historical and has increased every single year. The percentage that the municipality has said to pick up. I know many of you have talked about this in the past. It's important to draw attention to that. So what's a driver of this budget is the realities that we're seeing less state revenues, which are then increasing the bottom line to the municipality. The next, so you have how much you're paying as far as the municipality. The next page is about per pupil expenditure. That really tells you how much you are paying per pupil. And that per pupil expenditure is telling you, you're right in the middle of the average of the state. And what I've done is this is where I was sharing to you the presentation I gave you fiscal year twenty four because the fiscal year, or excuse me, I gave you fiscal year twenty four there, but it hadn't been certified when this was, when this was put together. So you're going to see fiscal year twenty three, this is where you're situated in the state. And then you're going to see that where we fluctuated was we moved up a, a, a place in the district records group, and we've moved up six places within the, within the state. But the realities are that you're finding yourself still in the middle of per pupil expenditure. So that answers the question, I was spending too much or was spending too little? The next page is the educational cost sharing. That's also something very important to pay attention to. This is the graphic that you have had in the past that I think helped everybody. It elucidated the realities of where your proposals have come from the superintendent and where you've seen less revenue that's coming into the town. That has been updated to reflect my current proposal with you. So as it stands right now, there's a seven point three percent increase. But last year, where state funding covered sixteen percent of the budget, now it's covering seventeen percent of the budget. The next chart below that, it's also important to denote. We, as a school district, don't see educational cost sharing. The town of East Hampton sees this. It's referred to as educational equalization funds that they have received. This gives you right now the state mandated schedule, phase out schedule for ECS, educational cost sharing. This will be talked about. I am certain this will be talked about because for the past two years, they have adjusted this and held towns harmless as a result of what would have been decreases that we would have seen. However, absent any legislative movement, you're going to potentially see these decreases in state revenues and educational cost sharing. So that's seventy six, where we were most recently. That's only going to get larger where the amount of it being picked up by the municipality because we're seeing less coming in from the state. Okay? So we've gone, we've taken a look at what we're receiving from the state and the federal funding. We've gone into per pupil expenditure. We've talked about educational cost sharing, excess costs. This in itself, it's a challenge to be able to explain and have everybody understand it. But excess costs is a major driver of your Board of Education budget. What I provided for you is an explanation as to how excess costs work. For the past two years, the biennial budget was level funded. Hundred eighty one million dollars, likely over a hundred eighty one million dollars for each year. The obligation at the end of last year, meaning the demand, was two hundred and fifty million. So it was well shy of what it needed to meet its legislated mandate as far as excess cost to school districts. So in last year's budget, and I would have to go back and we'll, we'll, we'll review this when we get to the special education portion in one of our deliberations. But I believe you budgeted at seventy five percent. Last year I was at seventy, for, for excess costs. And, and fiscal year twenty five for this current year.
Oh, seventy one or seventy two, right?
Sixty eight to seventy, I don't think it was higher than that.
Okay. So this past year, we ended up at sixty eight percent. Where your budget, you had budgeted for a certain amount to receive, but because there was a shortfall in the amount that the state had appropriated with its hundred eighty one million. This year, the projections are that, once again, for this current fiscal year, fiscal year twenty five, a hundred eighty million dollars is there for school districts. But there is the potential that there could be three hundred and seventeen million dollars worth of need that is going to be presented to the state. Thereby, it's going to potentially decrease how much revenue they can provide. So in the current fiscal year, if it's budgeted for this year at sixty eight percent, we could be seeing, and there was any correspondence that went out last week, that it could be as low as fifty nine percent of meeting reimbursement for the current fiscal year. Those are some of those liabilities that you really can't plan for and anticipate. But there is some good news, and I put this in the orange box below, is that we're entering into a biennial budget year. So the Commissioner of Education has already provided the agency proposal for the Connecticut State Department of Education relevant to excess costs. They have expanded the funding in the agency request by five hundred million dollars. That would help to meet what the expectation or what the need would be. However, we don't know what's going to happen over the course of this legislative session. But it was difficult because as we want to present a budget to you, we don't want to overfund a line. So we budgeted next year at seventy five percent based on the fact we're going into a new biennial year, and we know what proposal was in front of the governor and what's going to be in front of the legislature. So do you budget it at sixty eight percent or wherever it lands this year? Where then that may be way under what we're going to get for the state. So we propose to you where the state right now is receiving its agency proposal for it. But that's something we have to watch very closely as we move forward. And then that further defines just in terms of the excess costing, excess cost funding. Then the next special pieces to, just to note that are important for understanding, it's the student enrollment. Within here, I've identified really what I've noted as being, you're seeing two large class sizes going through the middle school in grade seven and grade eight. going through the middle school in grade seven and grade eight. Those larger class sizes are coming up to the high school. We know that some of those eighth graders are gonna go to Magnet, they may go to Voag, uh, they may go to vocational schools. So the number of a hundred fifty-five students, when it goes into the eighth grade or goes into ninth grade next year, it could be perhaps twenty students last, I believe that's, uh, where the average has been. However, to propose decreases in staffing at the high school right now, where there is the potential that a larger freshman class is coming in there, it gives reason as to why we didn't go with the, with the increase, uh, in there. Uh, next is special education enrollment trends. Uh, this just gives you where we are as a district relevant to the identification disabilities. Um, what I, what I wanna just make point of is, is the fact that your identification rates, your, uh, your disability types and percentages by type are all in alignment where the state, uh, are. So for those that may say that we're over-identifying in special education, um, or that there is some underlying issue relevant to it, uh, within the district, this information shares with you that we are right following in those trend lines of the state. And then I did note on here, I gave you, uh, perspective on the number of special education tuitions over a period of years, and that's on page twenty-one. Uh, and once again, we have sixteen students in, in twenty-four, twenty-five in our current school year. We've budgeted for the sixteen, or for sixteen students for the upcoming, uh, school year. Uh, and then, uh, what's the next, uh, uh, the next factor that just breaks down your percent, uh, perspective, uh, relevant to the special education tuitions, uh, uh, by year, the number of students who are outplaced versus your total population. Yes, population of special education have increased over the past ten years. However, the percentage of students, uh, that has been outplaced, uh, has remained, uh, fairly modest and is much less than it was during the era of two thirteen to two thousand seventeen. Okay? And then there's one additional part. I know I got Magnet and Voag that's on there, but I just wanna once again reference. So the last piece that's important for the board to know is that allocation of staffing, and that was in that staffing report that was given to you. So when you take everything I've just shared with you, those are what are really the construct of the budget. Those are the important answers or the questions that you may have about the why is it the way that it is? And that's what's driving really, uh, the bottom line of it. The next section of the budget book is on page twenty-four. That begins, I'm not gonna go into all of these in detail. Once again, there's a lot of information to absorb. I just wanted to spend more time on the, the whys in this next section. This next piece, these are your object codes, this whole next section. What I've done is literally broke it down for you, where it breaks down, how much are we spending in these object codes? And what are the drivers? So you're gonna see as you flip through these pages, what are the increases? Where are we seeing the largest dollar amounts that coincide with it? And we've also put narrative that helps to explain, uh, it for you. Okay? So that's through the next, uh, several pages until you're gonna get to page, uh, forty. Page forty is for you all, uh, it's hard copy, but in your budget binders, they're there. These all get into the spreadsheets, and that's the details that you would have seen. Uh, I know that our business manager has additional, uh, spreadsheets that she will share that give explanations of them. But within this, and on for those that are watching that are gonna be clicking on this online, it will actually take you to that budget spreadsheet. But if you look in your budget binders, go to where your budget reports are, those are all in your budget reports. We have given you a district overall budget report that gives you all the line items in the budget. Then we've gone into each of the schools, which provides you a breakdown of those budgets that applies to each school, and it's all commensurate lines. Okay? The next part I'm gonna share is on page forty-seven, forty-six and forty-seven. Last year, in, in, um, uh, there was a, there has always been a budget survey that has been done where our faculty and staff have been able to present their requests to you. That is here. That's defined in here. Um, I know previously, which may understand is they would come and be able to actually present things. We've actually gathered the information for you, populated it, denoted which of those items made it into the budget, which of those items we're gonna source from different things, so it's not in the operating budget, and which of those items, it's still conditional based on factors. The three that are really conditional are relevant to the collective bargaining agreement, and it's about stipends. You, as a board, have already agreed to a certain number of stipends and a collective bargaining agreement for the teachers. And in order for us to add something new for a stipend, we'd have to remove a different stipend. But perhaps, uh, there is something that did run this year that we can re-designate that stipend on there. So that gives you, uh, the explanation that was provided by faculty and staff members based on their requests. And then the last, uh, section of this budget book, which is on page fifty-two, this is all of the supporting information. Um, for many members of the community, it's what is the return on investment? We're spending this kind of money, where do we see this results? Here provides a perspective on, uh, student assessment progress in the district. This is not new to the board. We've seen this before because we presented student performance to you as a district this past fall. Uh, a presentation was given to you by our Director of Curriculum. So we put the student assessment trends in there for those that are wondering, is there a return on investment? This is another important part that's in there, and that is what are the programming initiatives? So you're gonna find within that, there's programming initiatives, what are the programs and opportunities that you have created uh, within the District of East Hampton? It's very important to recognize that because it's those programs and opportunities that are keeping students here in our district as opposed to some of the schools of choice, uh, that are out there. And then, uh, we've noted in here, what are some of the local and regional partnerships that we have that are already bringing savings to the district? We've noted legislative mandates. These are the things that we don't have a choice on, that we have to budget for. Uh, and then the last part of this budget book is your capital. Albeit, it's not a part of your operating budget. I think it's just important to share that information that there are requests, financial requests that are with uh, the town as it relates to your overall, um, uh, fiscal plan, uh, of the, of the school district. So that is the budget book as a whole. And the last piece is just the binder. I'll go very quickly through this. Each of the, each element or each tab of the binder provides information that supports the book that was just shared with you. I have placed laws as it relates to legislation in there, the NASDAQ enrollment charts. Those are provided within there. You have, uh, once again, that staffing report is there. Uh, there is also from each of our schools, a narrative that gives an explanation as to where or what it was that were the drivers of their budgets. And then the last is the capital plan. So there is a lot that is there for you. I recognize it's overwhelming. Didn't want to overwhelm anybody, but I already have, which is my information I've provided. But just take some time to review this. I think it could answer a lot of those questions. Um, and as I had mentioned earlier, we will have a running spreadsheet to help field questions from board members, uh, so that we can certainly come to the meetings prepared in the future. Okay? Very good. Okay? What's that? Right, thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanna acknowledge one more time how much information we have in front of us, but how much time and effort went into putting it together. So thank you, Sam, Karen, Mary, all of our administrators, the whole team, we know, Shelley, all of the central office staff. We know it was a tremendous undertaking, and we greatly appreciate the time and the effort that went into it. And we will all commit ourselves to studying this book very intently over the coming weeks. And again, I ask you, um, board members to please utilize the, the Google Doc once we get it to, um, put your questions on the same place that allow us to avoid repetition. It will allow them to prepare answers for us. Um, so we have, we have a lot of work to do, all of us.
Um, amen. Did you stay, uh, uh, where do you, if we have questions?
We will be receiving a, a Google Doc of sorts that we can place our questions in. Everyone, we, we will all be able to see each other's questions. They will be able to hear our questions so that they can prepare answers.
Okay.
Thank you very much. We have no unfinished business this evening. Does anyone have future business? I mean, we have a lot of future business. We're looking at it, but anyone having anything additional?
I was wondering, do we have a date in mind for when we're going to have our legislators, uh, come before the boards?
We talked about that we're looking to do that at the tri-board meeting.
Which is, um,
We do not have a date for that yet, but we're looking at the end of January.
End of January.
Yeah, anyone else? Uh, new business. We have a senior class trip up to twenty twenty-five, trip to Washington DC that we need to approve. And I have a motion.
I motion to approve the October twenty twenty-five senior class Washington DC field trip.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All of the information was included in our packet. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Sasha's and I as well. Thank you very much. Um, moving on fourteen point two, we need to approve the April twenty twenty-six band trip to Disney World. It was a good one.
I'll make the motion to approve the April twenty twenty-six band field trip to Disney World.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Again, the information is all in our packet. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Great, thank you very much. Mr. Beck, can you walk us through our policies for this evening?
Sure, we have two. First one, uh, is a first read on the Board of Education policy six point four six, graduation requirements. Uh, this included a legislative update that removed the Capting Project, the state legislation. Um, personal finance, as mentioned earlier, was added, and it updated the legal references. That's all I have about it.
Any questions? Yes, I have a question. When, when does this take effect with what graduating class? It says twenty twenty-three here, but this is clearly a different, a different line of requirements.
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven. Should, should the policy say that on the first page, on third, murder?
So technical. Yes.
For years.
Yeah, that's the graduating path book twenty twenty-three, so that is in error. That needs to be revised very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Congratulations requirement.
Actually, observe something. Uh, Dr. Vintas, maybe you can help me with this. The the credits, when I add them up, thinking the map is good at twenty-six, and we're saying it's twenty-seven.
I'm wondering if we've told if we do that with the capstone piece for it.
That's, yeah, because the capstone went away.
Yeah.
Where's that other? All right, that could be a lookout here. I got twenty-seven.
Personal finance on the left, half and half. Does that make up the one? I got twenty-six. Um, personal finance is a half, right?
You got twenty-six there. I think it's twenty-six. Who are you gonna count again?
You got twenty-six too, right?
Oh, twenty-six, yeah.
It's four. You got me on the twenty twenty-three, but I thought.
Work team. All right, are we good? Do we wanna discuss further? Shall we just make those adjustments and bring it back for a second read at the next meeting?
Yes.
Second one is, uh, Board of Education policy six point four eight regarding FAFSA. This, uh, this policy is really just to encourage, uh, more people to complete FAFSA. As Principal Burner has mentioned, uh, it's a really important application. Uh, it gives you access to federal aid, state and, uh, institutional aid. There's no cost to it. Uh, a lot of people are confused that no matter where they are in the economic world or, uh, I think it's only for low-income families. It's not. It does help those families also. Qualifies people for scholarships, um, simplifies, you know, planning and this offers a lot of opportunities. There's no downside. There's no cost, uh, to people. So this policy, uh, was designed to really just increase the percentage of people that apply for this, uh, program. Same thing.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, just, if someone enlisted in the military, they still have to fill that out?
Part of the policy or part of the legislation is that there is a waiver. Um, so it's, it's requiring all students to fill out, all families, all the FAFSA. Unless there is a waiver, there's a process in place, our counselors work with our kids to do that in families. And then I believe it's, it reads, I, you know, myself or someone in administration follows up with the family, and there's a waiver that I'm sure CAE or CAFS will give us as a foil plate to say, I, no, I don't need to do it. There you go. That's how we need the standard.
Got you. Thank you.
Other questions? Is the, um, is the waiver piece the new part of this legislation?
The classic twenty twenty-seven, it's not legislation, it's twenty, twenty-seven graduation requirements.
Okay, thank you.
We have no personnel actions this evening, audience citizens. Is there anyone who would like to speak? I believe we have no attendees left on Zoom. Anyone in the room? Hearing none. Calendar of events is attached. Anything that you'd like to highlight? Dr. Vantas, will you say goodnight?
What's that? Say goodnight?
All right, say goodnight. All right, we're looking to return.
Hold on, hold on. Calendar of events, uh, we don't, I don't see the, um, the policy subcommittee. Should that be on here?
This is a school event, school.
Oh, the school event.
Great. You have motion to adjourn. In a second, all those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.